Rich Crest City Council for August 6th. If we could get a roll call.
Mayor Endicott?
Present.
Blades?
Present.
Roger Ratnam?
Present.
Hayman?
Present.
Gorman?
Present.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Next, do we have any motion for an approval of the agenda?
So moved, second.
I believe there was going to be a switch of order on the agenda.
Oh.
Is that true, city manager? Four to two.
Four to two.
I guess four to two, I've been told.
So we just want to move item number four to number two.
Okay. Who's briefing four? Who's briefing number four, is that Travis?
Travis is doing number four, so he's just gonna bump.
Alright.
So we need an approval with the amendment?
Approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
So we have a first and a second, Solomon was the first?
Thank you.
Right? I'm giving you credit.
As it changed, since we had to do a new approval, it's you and I.
Okay.
Please vote.
I'm still trying to give you credit.
I mean, Solomon deserves the credit.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Alright, if I can ask you all to rise, remove your hats, as we say the Pledge of Allegiance, and please stay standing for the invocation after. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me in prayer if you would. Dear God, we ask for your wisdom and guidance, and request you to be here in this city council meeting. May wisdom and clarity of thoughts be granted as the matters in front of us are addressed. May decisions which we make be useful to our, to this community. Bless each one of us here today, in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Alright, so next we have public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not act on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Do we have any persons wishing to?
Good evening, mayor and council. I've got one question I'd like to ask, and it's a, only would take a one-word answer, if I could get an answer during public comment, have we decided to support the fireworks on July 4th?
So I will tell you, we covered that at our Quality of Life meeting last night. We will talk about it at the committee report, but there, Chip Holloway and Lori, I forget Lori's last name, they were present, along with Carrie Crutcher from the RACBB. We're working on a way to provide a QR code that will go throughout the year, so people can donate if they wish throughout the year. The city will continue to support, and I know the RACBB will also be a supporter of it for next year, and the hope is that it is on the 4th of July next year. And we're working on finding it on a weekend as close to the 4th of July as possible, if the 4th doesn't fall on a weekend or a Friday. Because their fear is attendance will dip, and people staying out late on a Tuesday or Wednesday, that they may not get the attendance for, for the fair, or for the fireworks, if it happens during the middle of the week.
Okay, so, okay, so it sounds like the emphasis is that the city will help and support getting on the 4th of July, if that's the right thing to do.
I have a question, having, since we have consent, there's a discussion on an item that is not under control, providing information to the speakers by, as far as confirming what the council will do in the future.
No, no, I was just telling him what transpired at the committee meeting last night.
I wasn't asking for a decision, or a vote, or anything like that. It's okay for them to have a discussion with the public, and you shouldn't try and stop them from talking to the public.
But it'll be part of our Quality of Life, like the mayor said, we'll, we discussed it in the meeting last night, and it'll be part of the Quality of Life Committee discussion later in the council meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Just, I don't like somebody jumping up saying we shouldn't have a dialogue.
But he's correct.
But a dialogue.
That's what he said. And so, we'll wait and we'll discuss it later in the meeting.
Okay. Alright, the next thing, I sacrificed over two minutes to let, to get a response from you, and I'm glad I did that. I sacrificed that anytime to get a response from the council. Next, I would like to, again, ask about how supervisor Peters is supporting the city of Rich Crest and the Indian Wells Valley. From listening to some of you up there, it sounds like he's doing a great job, and I have to beg to differ, he's doing a great job. First thing, if he walked in the door right now, I wouldn't even know who he was. I've never seen this guy. So has he come over here to the Indian Wells Valley and show himself, and go to places and meet people? Maybe he doesn't have to make an appointment to see me, but, I mean, anyway. Some of the things he did do, for sure, he hasn't negotiated anything as far as our fire services, all we do is pay more. Pay more every year, going up. What's he doing to help that? What's he doing to help that we have to cart all our prisoners over to Lerdo and Bakersfield? What's he doing there to help us, so we don't have to waste our officers' time and money and buy them equipment? Why don't we have our jail here, open to receive? Yes, I know Sheriff Youngblood is in charge of the jail, but if you're gonna wanna try and push it off on just Sheriff Youngblood, apparently the supervisor's got nothing to say. And I've got a problem with that. I went out, I polled people, does anybody see any road that the county has worked on since he took office? Not one person has shown anything that he's done to help the Indian Wells Valley. And I'm not talking about the city of Rich Crest. Even though you are representatives, you think he's doing a great job, well, when you talk to him, ask him these questions. Have you paved any road over here in the valley? We haven't had a road over here since John McQuiston paved. It's the last time a county supervisor supported it. And back in those days also, the county supervisor came to this podium right here, on an annual basis, to brief the council and the people on what they're doing at the county level, and to talk to us. When's the last time Peters stood at this podium? Ever? That's the representation that we get. He's not doing anything for us. Thank you.
Any other persons wishing to comment on items not on the agenda? Oh, someone is on the phone, thank you. If we can get the caller. I always forget to look at the green light.
Okay, caller, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello? Yes, can I?
Yes.
Okay, this is Mike Deal, and I've got, we're still on public comment, because I kinda lost it there for a little bit.
Yes, we are still on public comment.
Okay. I got a comment about the recent attempted crime and arrest of this person here. We posted it on the Rich Crest Police Department Facebook page. Apparently this criminal has committed a crime earlier, I believe, was the case where he went in and took a vicious punch at an old man, stole his money, and in this newest case, guys run around getting into criminal activity, threatening people that they are 15 liars. Now, I've thought of something forever, and I'm continuing to say this, the best way to come into crime in Rich Crest is for citizens to arm themselves. But now we've got guys walking around, open lunch, and I turn them back into town, after being put on probation, of course, by the liberal state of California, and he cut loose again in the back, and not just committing physical assault, but committing threats with liars. It's time for these guys to realize they're gonna put themselves at a safety risk if they do this kind of thing, and I'm telling, I'm just saying to all the citizens that are listening, and any reporters that are on this, that citizens of Rich Crest need to arm themselves, and Rich Crest needs to get, become known as the city, the best armed city in California. If that was ever happened, we wouldn't have a little time for Rich Crest, wouldn't need these five cameras that's been at us all this time, so we just be safe. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons wishing to comment? Alright, we'll move to council announcements and direction. Any member of the council have any announcements or direction? No? 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 Okay. Moving on to consent calendar.
I'm sorry, if I may, can I go back real quick?
Sure.
I was gonna save it till later, but I can, I can say it now, we just got done swearing in several officers. I wanted to say it at the beginning, Councilman Gorman, you were there, it was just, it was a really beautiful thing to see, so I am announcing at the beginning, just so everybody, you know, just to set the mood, that the community got three brand-new officers, their families were all here, these, all of these, almost, almost all of these chairs were full. It was a great thing to see, and I think that, it was accurate what you said, Skip, was really the...
It was, Kyle, it was, when those things take place, and I've learned to just love them, it's like a kinetic Norman Rockwell painting happening in here, where the families and the young police officers are getting their badges, and getting sworn in, and getting their certificates, and glowing with pride. You can't help but just get a warm feeling for the future. That's what I felt.
Yeah, you bet. Your words were perfect, you said, "This is us." I thought that was great, and so I am, I'm positive they're all gonna, they'll make us proud, they'll make the community proud. That's all.
Okay. Any other announcements or direction? Alright, moving on to consent calendar, all items listed on consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. There are...
Mayor?
Yes?
So on the screen, you'll see it says minutes, there is no minutes to approve, so the only thing that's on the consent calendar is the resolution for the Sierra Sands.
Okay. Yeah, there is one consent item, and they're listed on the posted agenda. Does any member of the council wish to have an item polled?
I do not wish to have it polled, but I will make a comment about the item.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to have the item polled? Councilman Blades?
Yeah, so, every, every of this comes up, as it should, and I always feel important to mention just a few things, and that is, my first couple of years on the council, I would call the principals that the police officers were interfacing with, and talk with them, see how, how was the program, you know, not to be critical, but if there was gonna be some kind of a detriment, I wanted to understand that, and it was exactly 100% the opposite. Every single principal was like, "We wish we had so many more police officers that could operate in this fashion," because they get a lot of early interaction with the students, they play basketball with them, they check up on kids, you know, like if it's kids that are not having a great time, they're checking their moods, they're, these officers are so involved and so engaged, and it means a lot to the community, it means a lot to the kids, and it means a lot to all the faculties, and I think it's an enormous aid to the community. And so I like to say something every year, because we have a couple of resource officers that are working hard in a different fashion, that I think it's important to recognize. And I think that the money is very, very well spent.
Agreed. So with...
With that, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Alright, we will move on to discussion and action items. We will be discussing item number four first, a resolution approving the program supplement agreement, number F-050 with the State of California Department of Transportation for the South Mahan Street Reconstruction Phase One, Bowman Road to Dolphin Avenue, and authorizing the city manager Ron Strand to sign the program supplement. Mr. Reed, I was expecting better hair from you.
Earlier. Good evening, council, mayor. This item is a standard agreement that's typical with all of our state and federal grants. This is for the first phase of Mahan reconstruction. With the signing of this document, it will authorize the state to give us a finance letter, which will then allow us to bill as the project's being completed for the $1.637 million that we received from the competitive grant, which is the Regional Service Transportation Program. And with that, I am open for any questions.
I don't have any questions with this one. I've been tracking along with the Infrastructure Committee, and I appreciate you, you working it.
So, I guess, the only question that I have is, in the resolution, it says the matching funds will be nearly $2 million, and then the bottom of that paragraph says the city's local match would be roughly $500,000.
Correct. So, when we set this project up, the project was set up and taken to the state with Phase One and Phase Two together. We have since applied for Phase Two, so the program supplement agreement is, the local match can be changed if we do not receive the Phase Two portion of the funds, but I wanted to take the project through the full Caltrans process, so that way there would be no delay. If we got those funds, we can A-MOT it, move it into this project, award Phase Two with one bid package. So essentially, we'll write our bid package to where it says, Schedule A is basically everything that happens in Phase One, Schedule B is everything that happens in Phase Two, and we'll say the basis of award is A plus B, so whoever is the lowest bid for the total project, but the city reserves the right to award Phase A, and then choose not to award Phase B, or to award Phase B at any time during the project. So, it just gives us ins and outs to where we can better use our money, and if we're, we've got a project that's running smoothly, and we're two months into it, and we get that grant, and the money is available, I wanted it to be as, a quick and easy as possible, kinda like how we did Ward Phase One and Ward Phase Two, so that way we can jump right in and get all of Mahan Street done.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay. Do I have a motion for action item number four?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Thank you, first Travis.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Alright, we will move on to item number two, discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority.
Thank you, mayor. So the Groundwater Authority did meet on Wednesday, July 16th, 2025, and we had one primary agenda item, item number six, which was the westbound communication social media engagement. Basically, that entailed putting together a Facebook page for the GA to be able to communicate with the, the public. There were concerns from various members of the board and from the public, and whether or not the, that would be a good idea, and some of the negative aspects of a Facebook page, and some of the positive aspects, but there was enough discussion that it was decided that we would give more thought to it, and bring it back to our following meeting, and make a decision on it. So, following that, we had the Water Resources Managers Report. That was rather brief, there was a couple brief discussions about the Radamacher repairs, those are ongoing. Steve Johnson, the heads-up Stetson, made a brief mention, which was intriguing, and I'm looking forward to hear more about it, seismic research in regards to studying water basins, and, but he's gonna bring more of that back to us at a, at a later meeting, so I was, I'm kind of interested to see how that might parlay into more data for this And, I believe Rose Valley, the Rose Valley wells on, up on the north end of the basin, work is ongoing there on, on the completion of the well drilling, and, and getting it into a monitoring phase. And I believe that just about covered most of the meeting, so with that, I'll bring it back to the council if you have any questions.
Yeah, can you cage me real quick on, there was, they were trying to drill a couple of wells in Rose Valley, and I remember the first one was meeting a lot of rock and issues, are they finally, so they're finally getting one in a monitoring status?
Yes, that's, that's the...
The same one?
Same area, yeah, I think they had to move it a bit to get out of the, the rock.
Okay, and I guess the second thing I have to say is, social media is a double-edged sword, it's, there's a lot of negativity to it, there's a, there's a lot of bad things about social media. In my opinion, it's the best place to drop information and leave it. So I, I think that, I mean, I've even encouraged this with the, with the city, and that is that you post information, and you just don't, you don't engage after that, which you can very well, you can either turn off comments, I mean, they're supposed to be just informational. The, every, any municipality that leaves those comments open, unless you have a very engaged monitor who's watching all the comments, can, can put the city, or the municipality, or the district, or whatever, can put it at risk. So, I, that's something to consider. There's also, there's also something to be said for just leaving, letting them run, and letting people say what they wanna say, I mean, there's something to be said for that. But if you're looking more on the conservative legal side, I would say that, you know, if the GA is really concerned about the risk of it, then just create the social media pages, create the newsletters, create the push and pull, and turn, turn the comments off if that's what they wish.
Yeah, oh no, go ahead, I would be...
And that's, that's just an opinion, I, I could see it going either way.
I would, I would like to hear from the rest of the council, with your thoughts on whether you think it's a good idea, and like...
Well, let me, let me add, I think that the GA definitely needs to have better communication, and I think that Judy, Judy Decker has been saying that for a very long time.
Yeah.
I'm with her, I get it, I respect it, I've been saying it, but I think that it needs to, it needs to happen.
I do too, because we're limited, you know, in quite a few ways on getting information out, there's only so many avenues to do it, and in today's world, you know, social media and, it is a viable option, and messages... Necessary evil. Necessary evil's correct. So that was, you know, some of my concerns too, I just didn't want it to turn into a, you know, a negative show, you know, so, but the idea may be...
It might, but I, I think, you know, Councilman Blades's comments on, you know, moderation, I think would, would assist.
It's not the, I mean, it's not the negativity, if people wanna be negative, that's fine, that, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is you can open yourself up to liability, either, either by responding, or some of the things that get said can be against people, like you can get yourself into legal liability, that's the, and so then you have to make sure you're paying somebody who's monitoring the page, and that's, so a lot of municipalities, sheriff's agencies, police departments, what, in other areas, they'll just have it as informational, and they'll turn comments off, and they'll just post for information, and just let it go. So, I am sure that there is an actual legal opinion, and I'm sure the lawyers will have some input, but, that's mine.
Skip, any comments?
No.
So, I'll wrap us up then, as the council, I'm really intrigued by the seismic research, is that there are, and if he just mentioned it, and then said he would come back, so you might not have the answer to this, but is it, is it the type of research where there are already sensors in the basins, and they're able to detect from seismic activity what's actually happening below, or is it, they're, they have a before and after type picture of, of what the basin looks like, and so they're measuring from, or looking at point A as compared to point B?
You're right, that, that didn't go into that depth, but I will say that we're the most studied, we're one of the most studied seismic regions in the nation, if not, you know, in the top areas of the world, so, but I will ask them at the next meeting, which is next week, and, and push them on getting more information on that, because it caught my attention too, and I thought, well, you know, we've, we've seen SkyTem and some of these other methods of analyzing, and they don't, they all come with some faults, so I'd like to see what the seismic research has to show.
Yeah, I would also, yeah, I, I would be interested into a follow-up, and to see how that, how that affects the base as well. So, are there any public comments on this item? I see that the lights are green, but anyone here in, no? Alright, we can go to the caller.
Okay, caller? This is Mike Sonat. I'm gonna talk about the decision by the Superior Court Judge William Kloster. On July 28th, he issued a proposed statement of Decision One in Phase One of the IWV's Basin Adjudication Process. Phase One was the necessary and proper adjudication of the Navy's Federal Reserve Water Right. Key determinations by Judge Kloster, in a proposed statement of decision, said, number one, there is no authority supporting the proposition that Federal Reserve Water Rights extend to non-reservation property. Number two, accordingly, water that does not serve the primary purpose of the reservation is not part of the Federal Reserve Water Right. Number three, the Supreme Court has emphasized that the implied reservation of Water Rights' doctrine reserves only the amount of water necessary to fulfill the purpose of the reservation, no more. Number four, the city of Rich Crest's arguments that future growth and more civilian employees were deemed to be both speculative and unconvincing by the judge. Indeed, Navy officials testified that no plans existed for future housing on the base, nor were there any substantial increases in the number of personnel or missions planned in the future. City manager Ron Strand issued a statement on Facebook threatening to appeal, to appeal the judge's decision. Mayor, would you mind giving me a one-minute warning?
Yes.
Thank you. He said, Ron Strand said in a post on Facebook, that in 2024, the Water District pumped 74% of its total use in replenishment-free, replenishment-free unused water. This exemption saved the Water District and its ratepayers millions of dollars annually. If Ron Strand's figures are correct, that means that another $41 million, actually $41,329,503, wasn't paid as a result of the, quote, "illegal," unquote, that's my word, free water provided by the Groundwater Authority in the GSP. This was a very big mistake. It means that customers of the Water District owe another $41,329,503 on top of the $14,521,177 that's already been paid by Water District customers, to be sent to the Groundwater Authority. Good luck with that, Groundwater Authority. If AB 1413 and AB 1466 are passed and signed by Governor Newsom, the agriculture lobby, the real estate lobby, the business lobby, and the oil and gas lobby will all line up very quickly to sue the state of California. SIGMA undermines private property rights, and regardless of the law's intent, it distributes water rights in such a way that there must be, there are most certainly winners and losers. The issue of sustainability demands common sense, resource management, that isn't held hostage by radical environmentalists or politicians with ulterior motives. SIGMA is proving to be an abject failure, right... Sigma is proving to be an abject failure right here in the Indian Wells Valley with an infeasible pipeline called AVEC, which may cost up to $400 million. And Sigma certainly has picked winners and losers.
One minute remaining, sorry.
Thank you. That's fine. Unfortunately, for all of you in the Indian Wells Valley, you are the losers, including residents of Ridgecrest and the customers of the Indian Wells Valley Water District. Support your local water district. AVEC is not a solution for sustainability. Demand accountability from the Groundwater Authority and the City of Ridgecrest. As for the San Joaquin Valley, remember, exporting fruits and nuts to China is exporting water to the CCP. And that's the end of my comment. But I have one question for Councilman Hayman. Do you know anything about Stan Tech and their involvement in the project for AVEC? Can you tell, tell me what Stan Tech's involvement is?
I have no comment.
Why, why do you have no comment? Councilman Hayman, why do you have no comment?
Pretty simple statement.
Well, I think it deserves an answer, doesn't it?
I have no comment.
Are you aware of Stan Tech's involvement in the project?
I, I think it's been asked and answered. He's not going to provide a comment. Thank you very much for your call. We have another, another phone call. Next caller?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah. Well, this is Mike Neil, and I'd like to comment on some past and current events here with the court case, with the quote unquote legal strategy by the city council and some ramifications that people need to be aware of. First of all, I watched with displeasure the last city council meeting. I was out of town, and I caught it on YouTube afterwards, and got to view the continued stance of, well, we have a legal strategy, and therefore we can't be transparent, and we can't let the citizens of Ridgecrest discuss these two assembly bills that we and the GA members, or some members at least, have paid a consultant to craft laws to try to shove the GSP results down the courts throats. Well, you keep saying, oh, we can't talk about it, we can't talk about it. Then you do talk about it, find about terms that we know where to follow about. That's what I just said. That, that attempt in the Sacramento legislature is nothing more than a blade now, right? An attempt that aggregates separation of powers in the lawmaking process, a law decision process. And it was paid to the consultant, money was paid to a consultant to craft those bills to try to shove the GSP results down the courts throats. Well, maybe you'll prevail on that one, in which case it's been already stated there'll be multiple lawsuits occurring because of it. At the moment, you haven't prevailed at all in trying to maintain the long held stance that the Navy owns all the water in the valley. Obviously, they do not. Testimony was given, to which basically the judge said, everybody who stands still and says the Navy owns all the water in the valley is blowing smoke. But that doesn't even make any sense. And came up with a reasonable figure, which was all that the Water District was after to start with. It was a reasonable figure that could be gone forward on. But it is clear that the GA and certain members of the city council and city bureaucracy are afraid that more reasonable decisions will be made, and they won't get to prevail on their faulty position that, oh, there's only 7, 8, 150 millimeter feet per year, recharge one. That's been refuted in three, three to four different studies. One thing I'd like to clear up is that when you see, people see posts on Facebook on the City of Ridgecrest, that is not city council, that is the Kingdom of Ron Strand. Ron Strand thinks he's the king of Ridgecrest, and he takes that himself to distribute propaganda to the City of Ridgecrest's Facebook page. And last one elicited a response by one of our council members who apparently quickly took it down. But the essence was, the city council didn't decide to say this. We hadn't had any discussion. This is not our saying. But from now on, when you see that post propaganda statement in the City of Ridgecrest website, just remember who you're listening to. It's Ron Strand. It's not the city council. And he thinks he's king, but he is not. People are king in Ridgecrest. We control this process. I want to call for a recall, Councilman Hayman and Blades, for their recent conduct, and I hope we can get some traction with that, because we need some changes on this whole situation here in this town. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have another call. All right, next caller? Go ahead.
What was that movie, that English movie where they're all running along the beach?
Oh, uh, Chariots of Fire.
It was the beginning of Chariots of Fire.
Did, did we lose the caller? Caller, if you can, call back in. We'll give them a few seconds to call back. Nothing? Okay, all right. So seeing no more comments, this, it's not a vote, right?
No.
It's just a discussion, okay?
Discussion, bring it back and move on, or if somebody has anything?
So seeing none, we'll move on to item, it's now four, but it's listed as item number three. Resolution of the City Council approving additional appropriations in the annual budget for the purchase of one battery electric transit van, utilizing funds appropriated for the low carbon transit operations program project in the amount not to exceed $1,000,027,178.67.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The Transit Department is requesting for an amendment in this year's fiscal budget. We're requesting for additional funds to be allocated into the Transit Vehicle Fund from our unbudgeted LCTOP funds. The city has received multiple years of LCTOP funds from previous years for the purchase of electric vans. This year, we plan to purchase five vans. One of those vans will be purchased 100% with LCTOP funds. The other four will be purchased using a pendant CMAC project. We're asking for council to authorize and approve for a finance director to allocate such funds for this vehicle purchase. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
So one of my questions, is it eight passenger van? Is that the eight slash one?
Yes, eight, eight with one wheelchair.
Okay.
It's a nine passenger, eight, eight and one wheelchair.
Okay, gotcha. And so is the $127,178, is that the cost of one?
Yes, of one, yes.
Any other council comments?
Pretty straightforward.
Any public comments? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel, thank you. Next, we will move to ordinance, number five. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Ridgecrest amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code regarding landscape maintenance.
It's me.
You're right there.
So this is a proposed ordinance for commercial landscaping. This was talked about at Planning Commission. We went over it for a couple of meetings, just talking about it. What spurred it is some of our landscaping in our commercial areas. And let me really clarify, this is commercial, this is not residential. So this is just businesses major, or mostly along Tilling Boulevard and Norma Street. But, so we had a huge amount of dead trees, and code enforcement has worked really hard to clean all of those up. But we still have, you know, dead shrubs or just dirt. So what we wanted to do was come up with a standard. Since the water efficient landscaping has been in place in the state of California, we've seen, you know, all of the turf die off. But we haven't seen all of our commercial businesses replace it with something more efficient, obviously. But at this point, we just have a lot that's just in disrepair. So we wanted to come up with a standard that we thought would work, but still maintain water efficiency, obviously. So what this ordinance does is it, it amends one of the code sections that talks about required maintenance, so just clarifies it and updates it a little bit. And then we added in a definition for hardscape materials, because we didn't have anything in the code. So hardscape is going to be like your decomposed granite, the rocks, any of those kinds of materials. So we added that definition in this proposed ordinance. In addition, what the code section really lays out is what the minimum landscape coverage area is for commercial sites. So if it's zoned commercial, then it would have a 5% requirement for landscaping. So that's basically like the parking lots and stuff. And then it goes on to define what those landscaped areas are. So, you know, in the parking lots, you know, what, what needs to be landscaped or any of the easements, stuff like that. And then it establishes planting requirements, so the percentage of trees and shrubs and ground coverage. And we did talk at Planning Commission a lot about ground coverage. And so what we mean by that also includes all the hardscape material. And of course, it's still water efficient. It still has to be approved plants from the IWV Water District approved plant list. None of that stuff changes. It's just providing a standard that isn't, that isn't subjective. And most importantly, what we've come to learn over the years is it also allows for exceptions, because even the best laid standard doesn't always apply to every site specifically. So right here is, on your screen, you're going to see this picture of Wiener Sitzel. This started out with some dead trees. We asked them to remove them, they removed them. And then they were asked to remove some dead shrubs. And then they finally came back, and they just went ahead and re-landscaped their whole area. So this is artificial turf. And then again, you have a mixture of different hardscape materials, and then all the plants are water efficient. And I think best of all for Planning Commission and for us is they also left the mature tree that was already there. So all the code really does is provide this standard, so that when we go to commercial sites and ask them to update their disrepaired landscaping, that we can tell them, you know, this is exactly what we're looking for. In Planning Commission, we talked a lot about what the coverage was, and then about trees, and then to maturity. And then we also, one of the questions that was most important to the planning commissioners was how would we implement this? So the intent of this is not to be, or I guess I should say, we don't have any intention to be aggressive with this. The idea is that we would go to some of the larger, well, we would go to the sites and tell them if it is in disrepair at this time, how we would like to see them proceed. We anticipate that some of our larger sites, this is not going to be something that's going to be an immediate change. This could take quite some time. For California, the water efficiency landscaping, they do require like full irrigation plans for sites that are over 2,500 square feet. So that's going to take some time for them to produce. So we fully are aware that it's going to take quite some time for those that are in disrepair now to come into compliance. So we do have a whole way that we plan to proceed, which isn't different than we proceed with other things already. So, so we have thought about that, and we've talked about that a lot too. So Planning Commission did recommend this, that city council adopted. So this is just the first reading. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. In regards to the planting requirements, it says trees, shrubs, ground cover, is it a all three combination mandatory? Or is it components of any one of the three, or?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the proposed ordinance, so it's going to be the last page in your, in your agenda, is the actual ordinance itself that you're looking at. So in there, item number seven has like trees. So you do have to have a combination of all of those things. Or the ideal is a combination of all those things. So you would have 25% coverage from trees in a 10-year period, right? So it gives them time to mature. And then for shrubs, we're asking for 5% coverage at maturity. And the ground cover, so then the ground cover is going to equal 100%. So again, whether that's a decomposed granite, rocks, artificial turf, whatever it is. It's all pretty standard, what you would see in a landscape plan that's already required. Like, so if you have a new, I should say, when you're doing a site plan review for a new commercial site, we already get a landscape plan that includes these kinds of things, or these exact things. So this is more for the existing sites. That's going to be new to them. Does that, does that answer?
Yes, so, but there's a clause for exceptions. So what I'm getting at is, say, there's a thin area and there's power lines involved.
Right.
Not feasible or
Yeah, exactly. So I think one of the things that we really thought about was, I mean, not, not that it's a perfect example, but like the art, the new Arby's, right? It's very small, and, you know, being able to make sure that they were able to accommodate parking was more important to us when we were doing the site plan review than landscaping. So in that case, and obviously, just like you said, because of power lines, utilities, we wouldn't, you know, this would be the perfect case for those kinds of examples that it doesn't. It's just not a compatible site to have this standard applied. So that's the intent is, you know, if the site is already existing, it doesn't really work, then we're still going to work with them, and they're not going to get a tree in.
If there's existing infrastructure that interferes with it, then the city as a whole, we're going to work around that to allow, you know, a, okay.
My question, does this include like the overgrown palm trees? I assume some in the median, that's Caltrans deals with that. But does that include those, that they'll keep those clean and?
So some of the medians are ours, and we do have plans for those. Travis has left, so I'll leave that glory to him. But yes, they, they do have plans for that, so I'll let him talk about that. But those are ours.
Okay. And the other thing, but I think you answered it here. So there is an approved list of plants that the commercial areas can use. And is that something? And is that something that citizens can also access to landscape their own?
Yeah. The city works with IWV Water Districts. So, the Water District itself has the approved plant list right on their website. And so, all of those plants and links to those are all online. And then, of course, when we have builders, we reference that, you know, to let them know because then they can go look.
Okay. Yeah. Because I sat with Bernie one day and his knowledge on plants is unreal.
Yes.
Because he just looked at something and could tell me the genus of it. And I was like, yeah, that just looks like a plant. I don't really know, like, I don't know. I do not have a green thumb whatsoever. So, probably more black. I kill more things, even in areas where you can actually grow stuff, but...
Well, and Bernie and Cody from Saracosa were huge in helping us navigate this because of their familiarity with landscaping and requirements. So, it was great to have them.
Awesome. Any other...
I appreciate it. I'm enthusiastic about this and support it generally. Hopefully, your draft ordinance will evolve with the way our local landscaping is evolving. I enjoy the example you put up. Good for Weiner Schnitzel. Did Bernie do this?
No.
No? Wow, it looks terrific. Yeah, I'll, I know things will come up that the ordinance doesn't cover yet. Hopefully, the ordinance is elastic enough to catch up. And that's the way these things should be. You're smart to take a long-term view. And we'll help in any way we can, meaning the royal "we," meaning me. That's all.
Thank you.
Heather, did you get any comments from the public at Planning Commission? Anything of note that you remember?
No.
Okay.
We never had any public feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing this for our approval. I know we talked about this four years back when I was on Planning Commission. So, finally, I'm glad to see this is coming as an ordinance. So, right now, Heather, it's just more educating and then asking them to implement this, right? I mean, we are not forcing it on them.
No. So, the plan would be, you know, we would let them know that we do have design standards. We are quite a ways off from that. There would be a second reading in 30 days before this becomes adopted. But, in the past, like, for instance, we had a store that remodeled and their parking ADA was out of compliance. So, we just notified them that they needed to give us a plan, right? Because if you have a large commercial space, it's going to take some time, right? And it's going, so by notifying them, we're telling them, you have 30 days to let us know that you acknowledge that this has become an issue. And then, it gives them time to let us know, right? If they have to hire firms to design and lay out their sprinklers, it's going to take quite a time. And so, you know, staff is ready to, if they need to phase it, whatever we need to do to work with them. The intent isn't to be, you know, punishing. It's just to get our commercial corridors looking better.
Building off, sorry, building off of Councilman Blades' comment, have you reached out to any businesses that you have seen that are problematic or need to be updated? And seen if they're open to doing that? I mean, obviously, Weiner Schnitzel.
No, at this time, well, so, we, we as in code enforcement, has very heavily been out on all of the commercial sites dealing with all of the dead trees. But, we weren't going to tell them anything else besides those that are safety hazard because we don't have any standard that was subjective, right? Just saying, we don't like dead grass, isn't, that's not a thing. So, you know, Weiner Schnitzel, we were thrilled to see them move ahead on their own. So, that's why I put them on there because they did it themselves. So, everyone has resolved their trees, everyone that's been cited. So, we do see compliance without any issue.
Pardon me for my ignorance. What is Zone PO? You mentioned different zones here.
Zone what?
PO.
PO.
Professional office.
Thank you.
I just assumed I wasn't smart enough to know. I was just going to let them go with it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other council comments? Any public comments? We have someone on the line. Caller, you're live.
Yes, okay. My name is Martin Hill. And there's an aspect of basically imposing landscaping requirements onto private ownership properties, such as what you've been talking about here for the last 10, 15 minutes, that haven't been brought up. Number one, a lot of these properties have been here for a long time. They've been there and they haven't had any kind of landscaping requirements on them that anybody, I guess I'm not personally aware of, very many. Obviously, there's more to come because they just crafted this new ordinance. If I was one of those property owners and somebody from the city showed up and said, oh, you have to take this dead tree down or you have to start landscaping, you have to put in gravel or fake plants, whatever the case may be, I'd say, well, this is like an unfunded mandate from the state. You want me to do it? It was your decision, it wasn't mine. Where's the money? Now, being in the South, the city of Richcrest obviously has more money than it needs since it spends, you know, $10,000 plus on regular parties, just partying time, just party time and nothing else. I would think it wouldn't be a problem for them to provide those funds. And ethically and lawfully, I think they should be required to do such. I could easily see somebody getting irate about having somebody else's ideas about what their property should look like forced on them through the color of law and taking the city to court. I don't know why they wouldn't. I mean, it's just distasteful to, especially like I said, for businesses that have been here for quite some time and they haven't been communicating, quote-unquote, by the city as, well, you've got to change your landscaping or increase it or change it or take this out or that out. And I could see somebody getting really unhappy about all of a sudden being informed that things have changed, Bud, and you've got to landscape the property. I think that's pretty presumptuous, a part of the Planning Commission people who crafted this and the city itself. And I just, I don't like to see moves like this where they assume that your property is their property and they can tell you what to do with it. That is a wrong application of basic American freedom of law. So, that's all I have to say.
So, I guess what I would say about that, right? Like, it wasn't that long ago that we had a code ordinance where we had to bury lines or something. That was something that happened early on this year. We had someone come in and, I mean, it's a similar thing to me. I don't, I disagree with Mike. I don't see it really as an imposition in the document that has been provided, the ordinance that has been provided. I mean, you guys are giving years to get up to 100% coverage, correct? So, it's not, it's not an immediate thing. And I'm sorry if I'm speaking for you, but like this is something that can be phased in.
Right. No, and I think it's a good question because I also probably didn't clarify that, you know, if you have sites, or we have commercial sites, they don't have any landscaping at all right now. We're definitely not going to go back and say, tear up the parking lot and put in landscaping. But, if you have landscaping that is dead in disrepair, you have dirt, you have dead shrubs, that's what we're talking about, is seeing those sites be rehabbed. Because the landscaping is there. It's just not alive anymore. I think we all know what commercial areas look like that. So, yeah, I mean, there are plenty of sites that don't have any landscaping at all. We're not going to go back and say, get rid of your parking and put in some trees.
So, I have one other question. So, what if, you know, because of water, many of the commercial buildings, when they went through the water conservation and were harping on everybody about, you know, don't use water until trees started dying across town. And we saw, you know, quite a bit of a landscaping go into, let's just call it a, you know, scorched state. And so, what if a business says they want to do zero water and just have landscape, whether it's compacted granite and boulders or a couple of pieces of metalwork on it? Does that still fit into the criterion of, you know, 25%, 75%, you know, the format that we have?
I think it definitely can. You know, it's just going to be, you know, a matter of working with the people, you know, if they come back and say, like, we don't want to. In the past, we've definitely done that for, you know, like the residential tracks where we've done complete hardscape because it works, right? So, it's definitely a possibility. They just have to come to us with a plan.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Just as an example, I mean, if you look at, on China Lake Boulevard, yeah, right there with the State of Brothers complex, and the grass has died and they've done nothing with it. This ordinance will allow us to be able to get with those property owners and advise them that they have to update their landscaping because it is a blight. It's an eyesore. It's really, this is the only way we can really deal with that. So, a lot of this has to do, this is not meant to be onerous. It's just meant to, for some of these businesses to start taking pride and have a little more curb appeal. It wasn't too long ago, you know, we had people from the public coming in, talking about the look of our town. And this is a key component to get us started in that direction. I don't think anybody's going to come and, you know, start issuing citations, you know, first month, second month. All we're looking for is the ones who are the worst are the worst. We need to get them on a path to get in compliance. I did talk to the property manager of the State of Brothers and pretty much got pushback. So, we as, you guys as a council, we have to kind of figure out which way do we want to go. Is what China Lake Boulevard, is that what we want our community to look like? I think what Heather and the Planning Commission put together is very reasonable. It's drought tolerant. It's not going to require these people to come in with a significant amount of money to be able to do their landscape. But, it will allow us over time to start pushing us over the next three, four, or five years into making some of these businesses look a little bit better. That's all, that's all this is. I mean, this is just staff responding to what we believe council has directed us over the last several years as to what are we going to do to start making our town look a little bit better in it? And so, that's pretty much the premise of this ordinance.
Any other, any other questions, comments? All right. Do we have a motion on this ordinance? It failed.
Well, sorry, Kevin.
Yeah. No, yeah, I make a motion. Yeah, I make a motion. Hold on, let me read it since it's not... Let me make sure I read it completely.
All right. So, the first motion is to waive reading in full of an ordinance of the City of Richcrest to amend the Richcrest Municipal Code Regarding Landscape Maintenance. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I pulled it up my agenda. I was reading it. Put it away.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call since I messed that up. So, Mayor Endicott?
Aye.
Councilman Gorman?
Aye.
Councilman Hayman?
Aye.
Councilman Roger Rotten?
Aye.
Councilman Blades?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Next, we have a motion to introduce by title only an ordinance of the City Council of Richcrest amending portions of the Richcrest Municipal Code Regarding Landscape Maintenance. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second.
Mayor Endicott?
Aye.
Councilman Gorman?
Aye.
Councilman Hayman?
Aye.
Councilman Roger Rotten?
Aye.
Councilman Blades?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
All right. So, next, we are on to committee reports. We have the Economic Development Committee. Its meeting was the fourth. Was that canceled?
We did end up canceling it.
Okay.
I have an update anyways because appropriately, oh, you have, you printed it out. Thank you.
So, Solomon, so this is something that I've said at least as long as I've been on the council is that I don't appreciate, it's disheartening to the public when they see committees get canceled over and over and over and over just because there's, a lot of times, there's people waiting for meetings so they can come and say something and they get let down. It's always unfortunate. And so, correctly, Solomon was like, hey, let's at least make sure that we're giving the public an update if we're not. And so, thank you, Solomon, for that. So, Richcrest City Nights event will be held August 23rd. So, there's going to be live music from Electric Mancha, drinks, food, truck vendors, some that we haven't had yet. And there's going to be some activities for the whole family. Wendy's and Ross are all well underway. Wendy's progressing a little bit more quickly, but both are on track to open in 2025. Oasis Entertainment Center, China Lake and Raiders, some, so, let's see. Town Place Suites located over by Taco Bell is aiming to open up mid-October. And I think that's it on that. But, there was also a part of our Economic Development Committee meeting. We also get an update from RECVB. So, they're currently very focused on bringing more events to Richcrest that will boost weekend activity, get some more heads and beds and hotels, patronage of local restaurants and shopping. And they have also rebranded their car show to be the Cars and Stripes, which will be happening the evening of September 6th, which is the same day as this year's Parade of a Thousand Flags. So, parade in the morning, car show in the evening. Car event will be patriotic-themed and a nod to our proximity to the Navy Base and its mission of national defense. Car show will also include a small moment of remembrance with each vehicle honoring a separate U.S. military personnel whose life was lost in the attacks on the Pentagon on 9/11. And that is our update from Economic Development. Thank you, Solomon.
Thank you. Next, we have the Finance Committee report from July 8th.
I think we reported that out on the 16th committee already.
Okay.
On the council meeting.
I don't remember.
There are some mistakes here.
Okay. So, is that the next meeting will be when? So, we can let people know. Next week?
I believe it is next week, but there was some discussion as to possibly canceling. I don't know if, did you get any confirmation? Has anybody got any confirmation on canceling it? Okay, we'll assume it's still ongoing then on the 12th.
All right. So, that will be City Hall Conference Room being on the first floor at 5:30. Infrastructure meeting, that was canceled on the 24th of July. I will reiterate Councilman Blades' comments. If there are items that you wish to talk about in these committees, instead of waiting for a public comment, please reach out to us. Let us know that there are things that you wish to comment and we can make sure that we can convene to hear the public.
Yeah. To add that, I have had folks reach out to me via email or Messenger or text to say, hey, could you please try to get this on your committee agenda? And it's fruitful to let the staff know ahead of time, let them know it's going to come up. That's what they're there for. The committee is where you get a lot of work done. If we use them correctly, it's where you can get a lot of work done.
Yep. Next, Parks, Rec and Quality of Life Committee met last night. Councilman Hayman?
Okay. And you can jump in at any time. And it was a rather robust meeting we had last night. We had quite a few folks show up for the meeting and it was, I would say, almost like having a city council meeting. I'll go over the new business. First was the flag football program. They're looking to add it next year and it will require a minimum... a minimum number of signups to implement, i.e., like, four teams to make it work. So they are working on that. Next was the future project, future project ideas. And that consisted of several things, looking at maintenance improvements, field quality on the various ball fields and soccer fields, looking at sufficient fields to meet the demands in each of those, whether it's softball, or soccer, or football, repairs to existing older structures, shade fencing, the Kermit Gee Center, and inventory and assess current parks and structures and any items that may be looking to be repaired or need maintenance in the either near or midterm or long-term future. There was some discussion as to, like, the Kermit Gee Center, some some heavier cost repairs. So I think it's, you know, we've been pushing to not only look at expanding and, you know, areas, but I think even more importantly, managing and taking care of the existing stuff that we have. So.
The roofs were a big issue for this and Kermit Gee.
Yeah. So that, I'm sure we'll hear more about that in the future. Next was the 2026 fireworks and then the senior center programs. I'm going to go with the senior center program first. We'll kind of end it with the fireworks. So we had discussion about the senior, the senior center. I think everybody's aware that, you know, there was concern of it being shut down or not being available for the seniors. Parks Director Nerissa, she mentioned that the city is either looking at or has, or bringing on a part-time employee that will open the senior center for 19 hours a week. The, I think the whole aspect of the senior center, you know, as a whole, is really important to the community. I think it probably is as important or more important than the other quality of life projects that we have. Currently, they're, they've gone from a hot meal to, I call it a box lunch. So I can't say that I'm overly thrilled with, you know, what's transpired with the senior center. Everybody was was happy. The the folks that showed up with concerns, senior citizens in the community that showed up last night with concerns, they were happy to see that there's been proactive work by the city to try to enhance the senior center. So I think anything that we can do on the, from the city side, we should do and maybe push, you know, on the county to, you know, do their part as much as possible, too. But we're, it's going to be on the agenda item next month. So we'll kind of keep it in the forefront so that we can follow through with with what is happening at the senior center. Next was the fireworks. That was a robust discussion. The fairgrounds folks showed up, Chip Holloway and Lori. And so I think the primary discussion was the dates that the fair, or that the fireworks have, that it's being held on. There was a lot of comments back and forth on, you know, is the community, do they want it on the 4th? There was discussion as to the costs of the fireworks. It's substantially more expensive, and we were informed that there now is state law that we have to have fire marshal as part of it. That's another, what, four or five grand, I think he said. And so there was also discussion as to, you know, funding for the fireworks because it's very expensive. So we we all kind of voiced our, you know, thoughts on on what, you know, we felt would be good. The attendance at the fairgrounds, it was brought up that the the attendance at the fairgrounds has has been greater, substantially greater by, was I hearing that right, at 500% increase in the participation out the fairgrounds for the event when it's held on the weekend. For a lot of people having on a weekday, you have, you know, it usually runs late into the night, and people got to get up and go to work the next day. And so there's, I think, benefit to having it on the weekend. I like the fact that the the attendance for the fairgrounds was higher. But on the other hand, I like having it closer to the 4th. I think everybody was in agreement that this last date that was picked was so far away from the actual 4th of July that it was, you know, it was frustrating, I think, to people. So we talked about someone, I think someone had brought up the possibility of having a survey done with the community to take poll from the community on what they would prefer. I kind of brought up the idea of having it on the weekend. If it falls, you know, you look at the calendar, it falls close to the weekend on most of the years, then you get the couple of years where it's like, middle of the week, or Tuesday or Wednesday. And maybe having it, if it's on the middle of the week, having it on the 4th. And you have a smaller fireworks, you don't have as much money. And then on the weekends, on the dates that it falls closer to a weekend, you know, having it on the weekend so that it, you know, it enhances the fairgrounds and we have good participation. So, you know, it's all just talk at this point, you know, so we we'll kind of go from there. I don't know if that answers your questions, Tom, as far as, you know, kind of what the discussion was about as far as those dates. But I don't know how the council, I don't know who would, you know, be the ones to partake that survey, if it'd be a city thing or the fairgrounds or.
Nerissa said she was going to talk to you about doing a survey to to determine when people would want the fireworks done, if it's on the day, or if it's in the middle of the week, like Scott was talking about, if we could do it on the.
Yeah, we can, we can put something on Face, Facebook and do that. I mean, I know that since they've been doing it on the weekends, the attendance has gone up quite a bit. So I guess proof's in the pudding. Yeah, we could do the survey, see what most people want. But really, at the end of the day, it's going to be who really shows up.
Problem, Ron, is that, so Facebook, as we have all resoundingly agreed, is flawed. So it's it's nice to do these surveys, but I think if, I think if, I think if we're really going to poll the community, we poll the community. I don't, I think a Facebook survey is inefficient. And if we don't want to use a firm with that, my background is in survey research. I could put something together on Survey Monkey. And if we just have a random sample of our citizens, we could get that out and.
Mayor, if I may recommend for more robust discussion of this, perhaps staff can agendize it for next meeting. And this way, you could freely discuss and potentially provide direction and make some decisions the staff can carry.
Okay. So can I go back just real quick? So Scott, you said I was going to stay on your agenda. Is that something you guys are carried forward to the next one?
Right. The fairgrounds is currently taking a look at it, and also.
They're going to give you numbers and things like that?
Yeah, and they.
And Nerissa was going to have it on, we were going to have further discussions in in quality of life.
Okay, then, okay, so we're still, we're still at the beginning phases. You guys are figuring it out.
Right.
Okay, I don't want to jump, I don't want to jump ahead, and we're trying to get ahead of ourselves. Doing the proper research and being prepared is great.
Yeah, I would say probably doesn't need to come back to the city council right away because there's still going to be discussion within the Parks Committee and with the fairgrounds. So maybe at some point after builds.
Yeah, like I said, when when they started doing it on the weekends, the attendance went up quite a bit. So, I mean, you're never really going to know until you actually do it on the 4th and see what the attendance is going to be, what the number of folks are going to be. I know that, like, for me personally, I'm probably not going to go because I'm going to have barbecue and fireworks at my house. So I think that's what, a lot of people leave town on the 4th and go on vacation. So this could be telling to do a survey. I know a professional one's going to cost about 30 grand. And that's about 10 years of support that the city, or three-year support for the city has for the program. So, I mean, that's quite a bit to be able to get out just in a survey. That's a one-time opinion that may bear something different out. But, yeah, I think it's obviously good for public discussion.
I say we keep the committees useful, and you guys have a recommendation to staff.
Okay.
No, we're, well, I mean, do we norm, I've never seen.
No, there's, well, there's not public comment during these things, but there's not, not to say that you can't hang afterwards and we can have a conversation.
And so, so with that, that was the brunt of the discussion. The, there will be a September 19th movie night. So that will be coming up and.
Lilo and Stitch.
What's that?
Lilo and Stitch is the film.
Lilo and Stitch? Okay, that will be the movie. What else did we have? There was discussion about the Sidewinders Football League, lighting additional softball fields, prioritizing fields and.
The softball, the softball issue was a one that was discussed a lot. There, there were conversations about the the state of disrepair of some of the the fields at Kermit Gee Fields, is that, and so I, I want to, number one, I want to commend Nerissa, Travis, and Ron on on the work, not only for the senior center, because you guys heading that off as soon as we found out about it and putting in the the work to get it back going. I want to commend you guys on that. And then Travis has already designed plans on how they can work through some of the watering issues at the fields. And there's a potential for maybe some other softball fields that could go in some spaces near the the high school softball fields at Leroy Jackson.
Mayor, do you mind if I add something that stemmed from the meeting I had before, right before yours? So it was, it was an impromptu meeting. I asked several of the, Scott, I didn't get a chance to tell you either. So sorry. I hope you don't feel blindsided at all. But I, I got with Nerissa and some of the, some of the heads of the various sports organizations. The football folks couldn't make it, but we, we talked to the youth softball, we talked to baseball, talked to slow pitch, and then they they brought folks with them. It was, it was a very good meeting. It only lasted an hour, it was actually a little bit less than an hour, but it was down and dirty, and we got a lot of good information out of there. The reason I'm bringing it up is because we had a lot of hard questions. Great, love it. And and one of those was, hey, you guys are talking about putting up permanent fences because Travis has had that conversation. Yes, absolutely. It's a win-win for the community because there have been cases where Burrows High School cannot play games, CIF games, because they don't have a fence. So if fence is going up, it's good. The slow pitch adult leagues, a little annoyed. They would, they would rather it still take a temporary fence, but from what came out of the meeting is it sounded like they were willing to acquiesce as long as they're working with Travis and the city to get those distances correct. And that that conversation is still ongoing because they, they as in city staff needed to still talk to Burrows, make sure they knew exactly which field they wanted to use. Then we talked a little, we got a lot of good input from the baseball folks. So Josh Griffin was there. He had, he has been tracking very closely, fields, grass, watering, working with Nerissa. He has a very good relationship with Nerissa. I bring that up to say that he had an idea that he needs to take to his board and his parents about, about possibly getting rid of that, the one field that was so dangerous. He's thinking, get rid of, make it dirt until we can get the grass figured out. Cody Paxton was there, that's on Planning Commission. He also takes care of his college. And he had a lot of good input on types of grass, types of soil, pH balance, when to water, when not to water, times of the year to water. And he stayed after and was talking to the staff at length about it. And so that conversation is going to be ongoing. I gave them my opinion as one council member on future developments and future parks because Travis did have a mock-up of what he would like to see. Great. I said, look, I don't believe that it's a, because I don't, I'm not trying to discuss it here, but I'm telling you what we discuss so you'll know. I don't believe it's appropriate to talk, we can plan all we want, but we can't talk about priorities until we see the pool go out to bid and we know what we're dealing with. Right now, that.
Nerissa highlighted that point.
Okay. And I just, I said that because, you know what, money is tight. Measure P is meant for community events, public outreach, pool, fire contract, police. That's what it's meant for. That's what we're doing with it. And so we, we're keeping that promise. And what that means is we've got to be responsible with it. And I think that we're not going to know how to prioritize other parks and advancements until we know exactly what the pool is going to cost because we're already going to be facing some hard decisions with the pool. So we'll get that right and then move on from there. It was my recommendation.
All right. Unless you have anything else to add, Mayor, I think that covered.
No, I think that covers it. Next, we have other committees, boards, or commissions?
I virtually sat in on the East Kern Air Pollution Control District meeting. That's a little group with a limited jurisdiction. Mostly, it looks after the pollution caused by stationary engines, power sources here on the eastern side of Kern County. And those meetings are very fast. By the way, our first district supervisor's office sits in on those meetings also. They're in the middle of getting their budget approved. This will take two meetings. At least I got some information on the small amount they get and how they spend it. And it's nothing remarkable. Though, that particular meeting was visited by a couple of families that drove a long way to get into that little room in Tehachapi and state their dissatisfaction with some activity going on near the city of Joshua Tree, where a contractor is putting up a large field of photovoltaic panels and had cleared the desert of everything, including Joshua Trees, which I thought were protected. They just made a big mess, and the wind is carrying that mess into neighborhoods where people are getting sick. To that extent, the East Kern Air Pollution Control District Committee became gatekeeper and rather than just shrug and tell the ladies there at the wrong board, go somewhere else to complain, we made it a point to bring in the proper authorities to handle their issues. And I certainly hope they do because things are a little bit of a mess up by Joshua Tree. Also, the KernCog, monthly KernCog meeting took place, and we got to know the newly hired executive director. Sadly, at this moment, I can't remember his name. I'll hear City Manager Strand say his name out loud.
Jay Schausenberg.
There you go. I see now why I didn't remember it. He's going to, we set, we set a date, I think, the, towards the end of this month, where he's going to visit here in Richcrest, and he'll have a short sit-down with Ron Strand and I and Travis Reed and any, anybody else here who wants to join us just before, or at least hours before, the city council meeting where Jay has agreed to address us and on a general basis, tell us what it is that KernCog does and how. And if we have questions about it, to ask them and get good answers. So any in our listening audience who is puzzled, as I was at first, certainly, and still am to some extent, what KernCog is and what it does, I know there's a lot of money associated with KernCog. Travis Reed certainly does, and he's availed himself to our benefit of it. So we'll be nice to this guy and learn from him. And and I'll, I'll let you, everybody know before it happens, exactly when it will happen. So you'll be on board.
I can tell you when that date is because I just got an email from him this afternoon, and he's recommending our council meeting on October 1st. So I will respond back to him and let him know that we can meet with him beforehand, and he'll do a presentation during the meeting, if that's acceptable.
I think, Martin, did you have a comment?
Mayor, if I may, to the extent that this meeting is going to take place prior to the council meeting and not be part of the agendized meeting, if Councilmember Gorman is attending, only one of you can attend that meeting. One other person can attend that meeting.
That's correct. That's correct. He was.
We can attend, just not talk, right? We just.
No.
No?
No. It, it would constitute a quorum of the council meeting to discuss. So even if the two of you were discussing, it's, it's a meeting that's held by the city.
And that's all I have.
Any other committees, boards, or commissions? All right, moving on to.
All right, moving on to the City Manager report.
Yes, I have a pool update. When Travis Reed and Matt Freese were going through, doing a deep dive on the design specs, they found in the plans some issues with the low voltage specifications. Really what that means is that deals with the computer access, door control, security cameras, audiovisual. While the backbone in the building, that design is great, the specifications of the equipment were antiquated and not sufficient to intertwine with our current equipment. So, they've been working the last week and a half updating the specifications, so they're, hopefully, will be done with them this week, and then we can then move forward with the bid documents. So, they did spend quite a bit of time making sure that, I mean, they had server equipment that was 14 years old, that was antiquated in there, and they caught it. So, it's one of those small little things, we probably could've dealt with it during the construction, but there might've been a change order which might've affected the cost, and so it was good for us just to work our way through that. So, Matt and Riley and Kevin have been going through that with the fine-toothed comb. We think we've got our way through that, and the specifications are what we need to have, so hopefully we'll get that passed, just so we can continue to move forward. And then also, a little bit more, Councilman Hayman, we are currently refurbishing the Shetland baseball field, and we're hoping that through that process, because we're going down about 12 inches, we're bringing new dirt in, we're putting amendments in, and then we're gonna sod it. And what we're hoping is if this works, we'll replicate this on the other ball fields, because it's turning out that because the water quality we have out at the Kermit G Ball Fields is heavy and total dissolved solids, it's created an issue over time. And so, what we're hoping is we can get the new field in, be able to put the proper amendments in the soil annually, so we can counteract what's going on with our water and the grass. And so, basically what we've created over time is we've created a layer of concrete, and it makes it difficult for the grass to grow. It also makes it difficult that if there's overwatering, the water doesn't absorb into the ground, that's part of the issue we're seeing out there now, is you water it, it evaporates, it doesn't percolate. And so, we're hoping that what we're doing out the Shetland can be, if it works, we can replicate it with the other fields, and then we can keep up on it over time to keep this from occurring, and basically address that, the water issue that we're having out there that's having an effect on the grass. That's all I have.
Ron, there was also a brief conversation during that meeting I had about the specific type of grass and what's working best and what's not, and some grass that's, can be killed with faulty watering schedules. So, I know you guys are thinking about that, I just wanna make sure I said it out loud because...
Right.
If we, I don't, I don't wanna throw good money after bad.
Right, I'll make sure that we address that with that individual before we move forward, because right now, we're just doing the prep work on the dirt, and then the sod will be next. But logically, if the ground will absorb water, the roots have a way of growing down deep, it adds some, adds for resilience, something like we have at Freedom Park. When Don Berwidge did that, he, he tilled it up, he put the amendments in, it did it right, and we have a pretty resilient field out back.
Do we happen to know what the TDSs are in that water?
Not offhand, but...
I wonder if it would be reasonable to test the water.
Yeah, we do, we do test the water. It has a high pH, and it has a higher level of TDS in it, so, but I've been told that there's, there's a way we can, what amendments we put in, how we fertilize it can help counteract the high pH level.
Guess my concern is, if there's any trend of it progressively getting worse, or, you know, end up like the water out by the cemetery where it's like...
I'm not saying that the water quality is getting worse, I just think that where our wells at has a high level of TDS and has a higher pH. And, you know, we didn't start testing the water until a couple of years ago to see what was going on, as a way of taking a look at what's going on. So, we've been testing the soil, we've been testing the water. I'm not saying the water's getting worse, I'm just saying that the water is of a certain condition that we have to, we have to make sure that we...
Yeah, but we have a baseline then.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that's mainly what I was after, all right.
And we chose the Shetland field because it was the smallest field. It's gonna cost us about 50 grand to refurbish it, and like I said, if it works, because the whole idea is to make that grass green, nice for the kids to play on.
And safe.
And so, this was, yeah, so this was the cheapest investment we've, and we've done a lot of research on it so far to try and figure out what the issue is. And so, we just didn't wanna come back through and till three inches and then lay sod on top, because I don't think that's going to solve our problem. So, now we're taking out a whole layer of dirt, getting rid of it, bringing new stuff in, and then, and then tilling it back in with amendments to try and get it to where, when we put the sod on top, we're gonna have, that water's gonna be able to percolate down, so we shouldn't be seeing a whole lot of puddling of water out there, not unless it's a significant overwater. That's all I have.
All right, next we have future agenda items. Any council member have any future agenda items that they wish to see? Councilman Blades?
Well, I didn't want us to forget, and Martin reminded me, actually. He put together, you'll have to help me here, Martin, I've already forgotten what your document was called.
I think Councilman Gorman is just trying to remind the council that at the next meeting we will be discussing the rules and procedures for council meetings.
So, there, agenda item.
It'll be on there next meeting. Councilman Hayman? Nope, all right. Now, on to Mayor and Council comments. Anyone wanna start, or anyone have anything?
Yeah, so, nothing big, but it's about to be, it's the first day of school tomorrow for a lot of kids. I think St. Anne's already started, I believe Emmanuel and Public Schools tomorrow. I know my kid is super excited, super pumped on life. It's gonna be, you know, parents get their houses back, but it's gonna be, you know, increased traffic in areas, so that's something to manage. That's really all I said, is just, I just wanna, I just wanna wish all these, all the kids a, you know, a good school year. And I know that you, I know that you were, you had some probably follow-on thoughts, so I'll let you, I'll let you take that.
Councilman Resher.
I think they're ready. Dr. April Moore, she made a presentation at Rotary Club today. So, it seems that they're all excited, so I wish them a good, successful school year.
Yeah, enrollment's back up.
Yeah, and it's increased by 200, it seems.
Yep, so that's good. Councilman Gorman, Councilman Hayman? All right, so I have a list of things I wanted to talk about. I was at the Walmart grand reopening, that was a great event. A lot of individuals came out. You know, good job to, you know, the corporate individuals at Walmart, but also the employees here who had to deal with the construction. We all have to deal with trying to figure out what, where the item we want, it's probably moved. I was able to meet our new Salvation Army officer, Major Mark, and I apologize, Major Mark, I'm probably gonna mispronounce your last name, Thielen House. And so, it was wonderful to meet you and your wife. If you guys have the chance to, to interact with them, they're a fantastic couple, very giving, you know, they've already started working with the kids, so that's fantastic. I also met a individual who's a, like a nonprofit organizer here in the East Kern. I would love to get more information from her and have her give a presentation so that the city can understand what the nonprofits are doing, what they're capable of, and so, I will be getting that information to the council and to the city manager. I also wanted to highlight a pretty sad event that happened in Georgia today. There were five soldiers at a, at a base in Georgia that were shot by another military member on the base. I don't have the base in front of me, but...
Fort Stewart.
Fort Stewart, thank you. And so, that, that was a very sad moment, seeing that happen. You know, it's sad anytime that there's, you know, major gun violence. Also, there was a report today about an individual at Fort Bliss in El Paso as being charged with espionage. So, as much as we worry about outsider threat, insider threat is still a concern for our nation's military and the Department of Defense. I was able to talk to Representative Fong, he was able to secure 1 million for wastewater treatment plants. He, so far, it made it through the interiors appropriation committee. It still has not gone to a floor vote, but it's already past that hurdle, so I wanted to pass that information along. And to echo what Kyle said, school is starting. I've invited the council members to go out and welcome the students in. I'll be at Burrows, and then I will hit Richmond after that. I think I sent you guys all the list of schools and start times, so if you'd like to show up, you know, I think it's, it's a good way for us to show the students that we care about, you know, their education, again, having that sense of community and support structure there, you know, just lets them know that, you know, not everyone's probably super excited about going back to school, you know, bullying still happens. But, you know, I, I hope, as a former educator, that, you know, the students know how much they're going to be looked after and cared for, and how much this community really wishes to see them succeed. Last, and I'll probably talk about this as, as the seasons go on, but youth sports are starting for, you know, the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools. So, please, if you have the time, take the time to go out and support these student athletes. You know, attendance, you know, it matters to those athletes as they see, you know, people attending. You know, volleyball, tennis, football, I assume cross countries now? I don't know, I don't know if anyone else knows, but those were some of the teams that I, maybe tennis is in the spring, I don't know, but...
Cross country kids are already running around the house.
Yeah, yeah, I've, that's, I just didn't know if they're just yearly training to, to stay in shape, but please go out, support the local schools, ICS, Burrows, China Lake Middle School, or Junior High, my bad, but go give those kids some support as they, as they work through the seasons. And yesterday, my wife and I celebrated our 19-year anniversary, so I think next year's China, yeah. I still don't understand how she's put up with me for 19 years, but, you know, I think she's...
I just don't want...
Yeah, I think she's achieved statehood or something at this point, but that's all we have. Thank you all for, for attending, for speaking up, and have a wonderful evening.